Just before we get into the rest of the presentation, I just wanted to, I thought of this little portion, this passage here in Luke 14. I'll show you that this is a, this has been a problem for a long time. And it's not a new problem. That people only care about their own things. And most do not care about what God is looking for. And I'm not talking about non-believers. I'm also talking about believers. Most believers do not care about what God wants. They only care that they have salvation and that God can help them with their problems. Luke 14. Let me read this to you and you pay attention, okay? Starting from verse 12. Then he also said to him, who invited him, oh, sorry. No, no. In verse 16, verse 16. Then he said to him, "A certain man gave a great supper and invited many, and sent his servant at supper-time to say to those who were invited, 'Come, for all things are now ready.' But they all with one accord began to make excuses. The first said to him, 'I have bought a piece of ground, and I must go and see it. I ask you to have me excused.' And another said, 'I have bought five yokes of oxen, and I am going to test them. I ask you to have me excused.' Still, another said, 'I have married a wife, and therefore I cannot come.' So that servant came and reported these things to his master. Then the master of the house, being angry, said to his servant, "Go out quickly into the streets and lanes of the city, and bring in here the poor, and the maimed, and the lame, and the blind." And the servant said, "Master, it is done as you commanded, and still there is room." So the master said to the servant, "Go out into the highways and hedges, and compel them to come in, that my house may be filled; for I say to you that none of those men who were invited shall taste my supper." Sad, isn't it? The master had a great supper. And he invited his guests. And all the guests, they had an excuse. They all had a reason. "I'm busy. I, what, bought a piece of land, I have to go see it. I had, I just got married, I have to go spend time with my wife. I, what, I've bought some ox, I have to go test it out." These days, you would say, "I bought a car," right? Not ox. But you can see here that these people, they think that is more important than going to the master's supper. It's very sad. In other words, more people care about their own life than the things of God. You know, the Lord wants to give us the kingdom. He wants to, He wants to share this with us. He wants us to be fully part of it and experience His riches. But what do we want? We'd rather do other things. You know, it's not important. "Let me be excused," right? "Let me do this, that, do the things that I want, and then when I have time, then I'll make time for God." And this is, this is really too bad, right? And the master said, what was his answer? He said, "Those people that were invited, they will never taste my supper." They won't make it. If you don't want the kingdom, you won't get it. It's a very precious prize. In Matthew 13, there was that parable of the man who sold the whole field. He sold everything to buy the field because he saw how precious the treasure was. You know? And here, the master wants to invite us and give it to us, but we say, "Oh, it's not, not so important. Let me just go do this or that first." And even in another part, I think, I can't remember where it says. I think it's even in Matthew chapter 8, it says, "Let me go bury my father first." Is it Matthew 8? Yeah, Matthew 8. Verse 19. "Then a certain scribe came and said to him, 'Teacher, I will follow you wherever you go.'" Isn't that what we say? We follow the Lamb wherever he goes? We like to say that, right? But what did the Lord say? The Mas, Jesus said, "Foxes that have holes and birds of the air have nests, and the Son of Man has nowhere to lay his head." If you will really follow Him where you go, will you give up your comfort? The Lord has nowhere to sleep. Will you be willing to give up where you sleep and your comfort? He said, "Even the foxes are in better shape than he is." The foxes even had a place to sleep, and he has nowhere to sleep. If you want to follow Him, will you even give that up, your own comfort? Then another disciple said to him, "Lord, let me first go bury my father." And the Lord said, verse 22, "But Jesus said to him, 'Follow me, and let the dead bury their own dead.'" You know, to follow the Lord, that's why we're not just Christians. We are followers of Christ. That should be our desire. You know, to follow Him, to really follow His example and to seek after what He wants. Because what the Lord did in His life was always to seek what God wanted. He always put the things of God ahead of His own. But now, we don't, many people don't care. Like we read in Philippians 2 today, right? All seek their own. Everybody seeks their own, not the things of Christ. Everybody. You, you think you seek the things of Christ, but it has to be on your terms. As long as it suits my schedule and my convenience and my, you know, it can be the way I want it to be, and I will follow Christ. But if it's not, sorry, I'll let someone else do it, and I'm too busy. You know, we, we don't force anybody. No, God doesn't force anybody, but we bring it to Him. Say, "Lord, how do you want me to follow you? What should I do?" And this is what the kingdom is made up of. People who really follow the Lord. You know, just like we read in Exodus 19. The special people are those who, what? They obey the word of the Lord. They're holy, set apart, obeying the word of the Lord. So anyways, yeah, just remember that, keep that in mind. So in the slides here, like we said, the kingdom is manifested in different ways. And the church is today, one of the manifest, it is the manifestation of the kingdom. And you can see this in Ephesians chapter 3. Ephesians chapter 3. Let's see here, verse 8, starting from verse 8. "It says, 'To me, who am less than the least of all the saints, this grace was given, that I should preach among the Gentiles the unsearchable riches of Christ.'" That's a wonderful verse, that we all want to taste the unsearchable riches of Christ, right? We all want that. But the verse doesn't, the sentence doesn't end there. "And to make all see what is the fellowship of the mystery, which from the beginning of ages has been hidden in God, who created all things through Christ Jesus." The mystery that was hidden. You know? I think sometimes we're not even aware that there are so many mysteries that we don't know. But God wants to make them known to us. And why? Why do we want to experience the unsearchable riches of Christ and see all the mysteries? Why? You should always ask why, okay? Don't just do things without asking why. And here, He tells us why, in verse 10, "To the intent." That's the why, okay? "That now the manifold wisdom of God might be made known by the church to the principalities and powers in the heavenly places, according to the eternal purpose which accomplished in Christ Jesus our Lord." You see, many, some Christians who are a little bit more advanced, they want to experience the unsearchable riches of Christ. But it's just for their own enjoyment. Again, it's still very self-seeking. We have to see why. Why is it that we need the riches of Christ? It's so that we can be transformed, so that we can be changed to be more like Him. And why, why do we have to be changed more like Him? It's so that, this, verse 10, this is the intent. "To the intent." This is the reason, is so that the manifold wisdom of God, the glory of God, the wisdom of God, the power of God, it can be made known and visible to the whole world, and even, even the invisible world can see it. It can, it's, God did not choose to do that by Himself. He wants to do that through His people. Do you see? God can make known His glory easily, but He chose to do it through people. But if the people are disobedient, how can that? It doesn't work. If the church is a big mess. If everybody is seeking their own. Nobody cares about what God wants. And the church is divided, and everybody's fighting each other, and you have your idea, I have my idea. You, you know, how can the manifold wisdom of God be made known by the church? You have to realize, this is what, this is a big part of God's plan, is to show the enemy His glory through His creation. This is why, like last night, in the Young People's Meeting, right? We talked about it. God could have just eliminated Satan by Himself. But He chose to do it through His creation. If, if this creation, this created creature can defeat this spiritual enemy, Satan, God's enemy, that is so much more glory to God than if God just went like that and poof, he's gone. It's no, nothing special if God just went, Satan disappears. But if the people, His creation does it, that is real glory for God, right? How a people who were fallen and turned around and transformed and, and the glory has been, you know, the life of Christ is, is filling us, and we, through Christ, defeat and overcome the enemy. It's so much more glorious for God. But if the people are disobedient, it doesn't work. If the people are self-seeking, it doesn't work. If there's no church, it doesn't work. And this is why God is so, or sorry, Satan is working so hard to destroy the church. Because it's the church's responsibility to show forth the manifold wisdom of God. Do you understand? No, who else on this earth? You tell me on this planet, whose job is it to display the, the power, the wisdom of God? Is it the angels? Is it the cats and dogs? Is it, what, the fish? No, it's not. Is it the people? Not even just the people. It's the church. The church has to do it. Do you see? So it's not just about me having some fellowship with some people and then, you know, "Oh, I enjoy this, you enjoy that, and, oh, you know, we're so touched by these verses and these songs, and then..." But no change in me. There's no church. And this is why we're going to get into this topic, because this is such a, a mystery. It's such a mysterious thing that in, in Ephesians chapter 5, verse 32, Paul even calls it the mystery of, what? What is it called? What kind of mystery is it? I told you, there's so many mysteries. What kind of mystery is it? The mystery of Christ and the church. If it was a mystery back then, can you imagine how much more of a mystery it is today with the big mess we're in? It's so much more of a mystery. So we talked about this. So the church is God's kingdom in this age. And like I said earlier, it consists of all the true believers of Jesus Christ that are born again, okay? Some people accuse us of saying, "You're only in the church if you are in these four walls." We never said that. We should not say that, okay? If you are a true believer of Jesus Christ, and you've been born again, spiritually, you are part of the church, the body of Christ, right? It consists of all true believers, all born again, because all these believers, they all have the same life. We all have the same spirit. We all have the same Father, and we'll get into that. But here, let's look at 1 Corinthians 12:13. I want to, I want to show you in the Bible, it's not just my words. 1 Corinthians 12, verse 13. So you can see, "For by one spirit we were all baptized into one body." All, okay? Everybody who are real believers were baptized into one body, whether Jew or Greek, whether slave or free, and have all been made to drink into one spirit. So we're all, it's the same spirit that's feeding us and supplying us and that, the same life that we have, right? It's all the same. Okay? Romans, or yeah, also, verse 27, it says, "Now you are, you are the body of Christ." And you, okay, speaking to the church, "You are all the body of Christ and members individually." And then Romans chapter 12, verse 5. Romans 12, verse 5. "So we, being many, are one body in Christ, and individually members of one another." So even though we are many people, but we are all part of the body of Christ, which is the church, okay? So now, who started this church? Was it Peter or Paul or, I don't know who, what saint, saint this, saint that? Who started the church? It was actually the Holy Spirit. The Lord Himself started the church. If the Lord did not start the church, then it's not the church. If man starts a church, then that's man's church. You know? It is not man's church, it is the Lord's church. The church was begun by the Holy Spirit, when the Spirit was poured out on the disciples and then onto the Gentiles. If you read in Acts 2, 1 to 4. Acts 2, 1 to 4. Do you remember when we talked about earlier this afternoon in Genesis 2, when God created Adam? And He made that mud, dirt statue. What did He do with it? He breathed His Spirit of life into it, the breath of life. Let's look at Acts chapter 2. I'll read it for you. "When the day of Pentecost had fully come, they were all with one accord in one place." You see, that's a prerequisite. You have to be in one accord in one place. "And suddenly there came a sound from heaven as of a rushing mighty wind." Wind, okay? "And it filled the whole house where they were sitting. Then there appeared to them divided tongues as of fire, and one sat upon each of them. And they were all filled with the Holy Spirit, and began to speak with other tongues as the Spirit gave them utterance." You see, here. In Genesis chapter 2, the Lord breathed the breath of life to form man. Here, you see, again, the breath of life, to form what? To form the church. The, if, if it does not have the breath of life, the spirit, then it's not the church. It doesn't matter what you call it. You can have a bunch of people making up their own group, and they put church on the outside, on the name. But it's not the church if there's no breath of life, if there's no spirit. So it was begun by the Spirit, and the prerequisite is that they were one. And then, they were full of the Spirit. It's very simple, you know? No complicated ceremony or anything. It was just being one and full of the Spirit, okay? Very simple. And this is the spiritual kingdom of God on earth. It is God's nation, God's special people. And it's called His saints, who are called, called-out people, set aside for His plan and purpose. And they are unified under Him, you know? So earlier, we read how we were baptized into one body, and there is no more Jew or Greek. In Ephesians chapter 2, it also mentions, when we are in Christ, all the divisions are removed. Ephesians chapter 2, verse 14. It says here, "He himself is our peace, who has made both one and has broken down the middle wall of separation." So all the things that separated people before it was broken down. So this shows you how important oneness is in the body of Christ, in the church. God wants all of His people to be one, that there is no division anymore. That's why on the cross, the Lord broke down the division. He broke down our separations. That includes our culture, our races, our, you know, our background, our, you know, everything from our past, from the old man, it's been broken down. And that, what that does is enables us to share this spirit with one another. You know, we're able to fellowship with one another. We're able to be built up together and knit together in the body of Christ. We're able to function together. If I keep this separation up, you know, I say, "Oh, Ronnie and me, we're not the same background. Oh, I can't fellowship with him." I miss out on what he has, and he misses out on what I have. So, and this is exactly what happened in the, in these times, that the Jews refused to fellowship with the Gentiles, the non-Jews. And so Paul had to write here to show them that, hold on, Jesus on the cross, He broke down this separation. Now you all have the same spirit. You have the same life, you have the same Father, the same baptism, everything is the same. So you should not look at your outward differences anymore, right? You should be able to, you need to be, you're all part of the household of God. So here, you can see what the Bible describes, many things of what the church is. One of them, the first one here, I won't have time to go through everything. You can read it yourself. But the church is really God's home. It's His dwelling place. It's where He chose to live among us, okay? So earlier, we had a song, I think it was 405, you know, you know, how joyful it is when we come to the house of the Lord, right? Now let me ask you, are we in the house of the Lord right now? Yes? How about when you go home? Are you still in the house of the Lord? How many say no? Nobody's, nobody's brave enough to say no. How many are not sure? Are you in the house of the Lord everywhere? How about when you're at work? Are you in the house of the Lord? So why do we say we're so glad to come into the house of the Lord? When we're already in the house of the Lord? We are in it. It's not just when you come in that door, then you're in the house of the Lord. That's the old thinking, right? That's, that's, that comes from people thinking that the house of the Lord is a physical building. You know, I go to church. Today, I go to church. But when I step out of church, I'm not in church. But when I go into the church, I'm in church. That's what people say, but it's wrong. You are in God's house. This house, the word house here, it means His household. It means family. You're part of God's family. You know, like, I don't know, Paul, where's Paul? Paul, when you go into your parents' house, you're part of the family, right? But when you leave their house, are you still part of their family? Yeah, right? Why do we say that we're not in the, we're not in church when we leave the doors? Right? It's a very strange way of thinking. It means that people don't understand what the Bible says. We are always, as soon as you're baptized into the body of Christ, you're baptized, you're born again. You are, when you're born, you are born into a family, right? When many of you have kids, as soon as your child was born, that child becomes part of your family. You know? We, in the same way spiritually, when we are born, we are born into a new family. We're born into God's family, and we are all part of that family. That's what this word house means, the household. So it's in Ephesians chapter 2, right? Verse 19, it says, "Therefore you are no longer strangers and foreigners, but fellow citizens with the saints and members of the household of God, or the family of God." You're part of His family, okay? You don't leave it. You cannot leave, once you're born into the family, you cannot leave it. That's also why we say you cannot lose your salvation, right? Because once you're born into God's family, you can't be unborn, right? It's like, you know, Paul's in your family, he can't be unborn, right? You're always part of the family. No matter how, maybe Paul is disobeying sometimes, right? But even if you're disobedient, you're still part of the family. You're just being disobedient, right? I'm sure you're a great kid. But I'm, that's just an example, right? We, no, even though we still sin and we have faults and we, you know, we make mistakes, but we can always, the Lord is merciful to us and can forgive us. But that doesn't cause us to lose our salvation, because God is still our Father. He's always our Father, okay? So in the same way, we don't leave the church. You're always part of it. It's just whether you're functioning or not, okay? It is also God's temple, right? It is His family, we talked about it. It's the bride of Christ. You know, the church is also the bride or the wife of Christ. So just as Christ is holy, the wife also must be holy and spotless. It's a nation, we talked about that. It's a royal priesthood. It's His field. You know, I don't know if you ever thought of the church as a field, but it's like a farm. You know? There are, in 1 Corinthians 3, it talks about planting and watering and growing. You know, we're all like little plants that have to grow. And the question is, again, are you, how are you growing? I hope you know. Are you bearing fruit? So, but you cannot grow by yourself. If you grow by yourself, you will not survive. And you can only grow properly in the church, in the body, you know, in fellowship with the saints. It's also an army. You know, we all have to put on the armor. And Paul also talks about how we are like soldiers, right? We're all like soldiers, fighting against the enemy, standing against him. It's the kingdom of God and it's the body of Christ. There's so many descriptions of what the church is, right? So church is not just, it's not, "Oh, this place, I go over there for Sunday." That's not what it is. You have to look at it from the biblical perspective. Don't just think of it from what you've been taught all your life. What is commonly taught these days is not correct. We have to go back to the word of God to understand what it is. Because this, why is it important? It's because this is our responsibility in this age, before the Lord comes back, okay? Yeah. Now Satan's kingdom, remember, we had the picture of the two kingdoms? That was God... That was God's kingdom. Now we have Satan's kingdom, which is the world. And I, I put down a list of a number of things, but this is not everything, right? And not everything is necessarily bad, okay? But you have to realize that behind everything is Satan. Okay, it is bad, but there's some things, what I mean is like, you have, we have some responsibilities with it, right? You have to work. Unfortunately, your company is part of the world, but you have to, we have to work, right? We have to make a living. And this government that we live in is all from Satan. But we have to, you have to live somewhere. You have to pay your taxes. You have to, you know, be part of society. There's not much we can do about it. But this is, but even though we live in it, we don't belong to it, okay? So I put down things like the entertainment industry, social media, business, commerce, economics, the political world, educational system, various religions, even addictions like drugs and alcohol and money, which is very addictive. All sorts of things, right? And this world is basically a large system that Satan has built up to control our mind, to occupy our hearts. So it's used by Satan to imprison people's minds and souls. In 1 Peter, chapter 2, verse 11. Chapter 2, verse 11, it says, "Beloved, I beg you as sojourners and pilgrims, abstain from fleshly lusts which war against the soul." Right, this is from our flesh. And these things, the flesh interacts with the world because they all belong to Satan. Their flesh has these lusts. And many, many times, what it lusts for are the things of the world. And then it takes over your mind and it captures it in your heart. You know, like, not to say that some things like, you know, even though, for example, money, you need money to live, right? We cannot say, "Oh, money is evil. I'm gonna get rid of all my money." You can't do that, right? If you do that, you're not going to survive. You need it. But money is something that can be used by Satan to capture your heart. You know, the Lord even calls it unrighteous mammon in Luke. It's something that's very, the root of all kinds of evil. But we have to use it, right? Unfortunately, we have to use it. But the key thing here is that it does it, do these things, capture your heart and your soul. Are they imprisoning you? Are you addicted to them? You know, like, and some things are specifically designed to warp your thinking, like the educational system. Not to say you shouldn't go to school anymore, right? But you have to be careful. If you have a choice, find a better school where they don't teach you crazy things, right? But a lot of the educational system these days is designed to warp your thinking and to warp your sense of what is right and wrong in this world. All the evil things they call right and the right things they call wrong. You know? So it's really, it's really terrible. And of course religions, right? Religions are used by Satan to capture you as well, right? So many people, they're searching for meaning in life. They're searching for truth. And Satan says, "Oh, here, I've got one for you." You know, "If you follow this God, you will find meaning in your life." So, yeah, so unfortunately, sadly, billions of people are on a path towards eternal death and they don't even realize it. Many, many people. And they're trapped by seeking for success, money, love, approval of others, good morals and happiness. Yes, you know, many people, they're good people. They're trying to do good. They want to do good and make a difference in society. But they're doing it through the world and through their flesh. And it's, it's just good appearances, but it's all from Satan. You know, sometimes we look at, "Oh, this person, he's a murderer," or "he's cheating," or "he's lying." "Oh, this is, this is from Satan." "Oh, but this person who's so nice and smiling and, you know, doing so many good things, that person is so wonderful." Now we look at appearances, but God sees the heart. If it's not of the kingdom of God, it is of the kingdom of Satan. It doesn't matter how good it looks. Don't be fooled by good appearances. This is our problem. We just see some nice, friendly people. You know, even some, some people in Buddhism and Islam and these things, they really give their life for their belief, right? They're so devoted, they'll pray five times a day and they will fast and they'll do so many things, right? They're so devoted and they will do good deeds and all that. But it doesn't matter how it looks. It's from the evil one, okay? I'm sorry if it sounds offensive, but it's true. We're just speaking the truth. If it's not of God's kingdom, it's of Satan's kingdom. There is no in-between. There is no third kingdom. There is only two, okay? That's why the Lord told us in 1 John, chapter 2, He warned us in verse 15, chapter 2, verse 15. It says, "Do not love the world or the things in the world. If anyone loves the world, the love of the Father is not in him." This is the problem. It's not that the, everybody knows the world is bad. It doesn't say, "Get out of the world." Because you have to go to work, you know, or you have to use money. You have to go get an education. You know, some, you have to do things here and there. You know, yes, avoid the drugs and don't get drunk, these things, yeah, obviously, right? There are things you can do, right? If you find that certain movies are bothering you and you feel dirty after, don't touch it, right? Obviously, there are certain things that are definitely polluting to your soul. You don't want to touch it, okay? But the key here is love. Do you love it? Do you love it? If you realize that the world is part of Satan's kingdom, you will not love it. You will actually hate it. So it says, "If you love the things of the world, then the love of the Father is not in you." Yeah, you cannot love God and the world at the same time. So you can read the rest. So that's why it's taken so seriously, because the world is of Satan. Right, it's not a small thing. It's really not a small thing. Everything around us is of the kingdom of Satan, really. You don't realize that you're in this darkness. Sometimes we just, we're so blind to what, what's really around us, you know? Again, we're not making laws, right? We're not saying you can't do this, can't do that. You decide yourself, okay? That's why the Lord gave us the Spirit. And unfortunately, what has happened is that the kingdom of God, it has become mixed in together with the kingdom of Satan. And this is, this is a very poor condition that is very common today. And this is what, what we can call Christianity in quotes. And it has become fallen incorrupt. Some of the things that are in it, there are many divisions and denominations. There are false teachings. False teachings are normal nowadays. And if you teach them the truth, they think you're a cult. You know, if you tell people your destination is not heaven, they say, "What's wrong with you? You're a cult." But if you tell them, "Oh, you're going to heaven," they'll say, "Yes, amen, praise the Lord, we're going to heaven." But if you tell them the truth, "No, the kingdom is on earth and God wants to take over the earth," they'll say, "You're a cult." It's very backwards now, you know? If you say that God's going to, "We all have to stand before the judgment seat of Christ," they'll say, "No, you're, that's too harsh. Don't say that. God loves you. You can be as you are. God accepts you. Love, love, love." Right? This is a false teaching. It's false teachings. And so this has become normal. And the people that are trying to pursue the truth, they say you're, you're the, they say those people who want the truth, those are the ones preaching heresies. It's all backwards. And dependence on man, this is so common now, right? People depend on, they say, "Oh, you're following brother so-and-so." Well, they're following, they themselves are following brother so-and-so and they don't even realize it. They're following pastors. They're following a priest. They're following spiritual authors and important people. But how many actually follow the Lord? How many? So when you follow man, then you're no longer following the Spirit. Then the Spirit has no job. Then the Spirit is, will go quiet. He'll leave you alone because you don't want to listen to Him. You'd rather listen to man. Twisting the Word of God, right? Because they don't understand the truth, they twist the Word of God. They say that, for example, that when the rapture comes, everybody will be raptured. They say, "Well, because it says that God did not appoint us to wrath." In 1 Thessalonians, chapter 5, right? Is it chapter 5? It says, "God did not appoint us to wrath. Therefore we will all be raptured." And they ignore what the rest of the word says. So twisting the Word of God, heresies, you know, religious traditions, like soon we've got one coming up. Well, the one immediately coming up is Halloween. Did you know Halloween was a Christian holiday? Yeah, it's a Christian holiday that got mixed together with paganism of worshiping the dead. And so somehow that became a Christian holiday and then, you know, now it's all trick or treat. It's strange. And then, and then we've got another one coming up, Christmas, right? All religious traditions. Not from the Word of God, not from the, from the Lord. Mixure with the world, money-making, yeah. Some churches can be big business, you know, lots of money. Spiritual entertainment, yeah. You know, people love to be entertained. There's such a desire to be entertained. And, but people think, "Well, if I, if I, am I, if I'm entertained at church, it's better." It's better. So, but that's not what the church is for, you know? Nowadays, when people think of church, they think of music. It's just where you have performances and you perform and you get, and you watch a performance. And you know, some of those performers are pretty good, right? They can really sing, they can play really well. But that's not the purpose of the church. It's not, yeah, it's just been, and of course spiritually empty. There is no food, there's no life. They emphasize good feelings. They emphasize man's goodness, good people and good works. And the church has become just something to meet man's needs and interests. You know, whatever I want, whatever I need. If my kids need something, I better find a church that meets that need. I'm a young person, I need to find a spouse. Better find one with some very good Christian sisters. I look for that. If I'm, you know what, I like this sport, I'm gonna find some people who can play baseball with me, find a team, a church. You know, it's all about what people want. It's what people want. Nobody cares about what God wants. There's very little emphasis on righteousness and what God requires for His kingdom or on giving up ourself, being crucified with Christ, taking the narrow way, giving up everything to follow Christ. Why? Because if you talk about that, nobody will stay. And if nobody stays, nobody's going to donate. And if you don't donate, you have no money, right? So you can't speak the truth. Because if you speak the truth, people won't like it and they'll leave. Right? Their feelings will get hurt. Nowadays, there's so much emphasis on people's feelings. If my feelings are hurt, oh, I can't stand it. Mental health crisis, right? These days, everything's mental health crisis. I can't take any little bit of criticism or suffering. I immediately go into a mental health crisis. And we have to protect mental health at all costs. Well, then how are we supposed to, how are we supposed to confront the truth then? My condition? If my whole life I've been taught everything is okay with you and then suddenly the Bible tells me I'm not okay and I need to change, then I'm gonna say, "Oh, that's too tough. This place is bad for my mental health. So I'm gonna go find another church that, that only speaks love and comfort." So basically, the truth is lost. The truth is lost because the church has become all about man and what people want. And 2 Timothy has a very good description of the condition. 2 Timothy, chapter 3, 1 to 9. I'll read it for you. Chapter 3, 1 to 9. "But know this, that in the last days perilous times will come; for men will be lovers of themselves, lovers of money, boasters, proud blasphemers, disobedient to parents, unthankful, unholy, unloving, unforgiving, slanderers without self-control, brutal, despisers of good, traitors, headstrong, haughty, lovers of pleasure rather than lovers of God, having a form of godliness but denying its power. And from such people turn away; for of this sort are those who creep into households and make captive of gullible women loaded down with sin, led away by various lusts, always learning and never able to come to the knowledge of the truth." Isn't that like, sometimes how we are? We hear so much, we want to learn so much, but there's no change. There's no change in our life. We never have the revelation. Yeah, so, and then chapter 4, same book, verse 3 and 4. "For the time will come, when they will not endure sound doctrine; because the sound doctrine is too tough to accept, too difficult." Because, but according to their own desire. See, it's their own desire. It's what they want. Because they have itching ears, they will heap up for themselves teachers. They just listen to people that they, that meets what they want. You know, I don't know if you, if you're, if any of you, if this sounds familiar. Sometimes maybe it's ourselves. If we, if we have something that we're dealing with, maybe a problem or whatever, or we want to make a decision, you know, should I do this or that? Sometimes we may only talk to people. If someone tells us, "No, that's a bad idea," and we really want to do it, we'll go find someone else, right? Like, let's say I, I want to go here. I want to, let's say I want to move somewhere and I want to go here and do something. And I go talk to David and David says, "No, that's not a good idea." So I'll, I won't, I won't agree with him. So I'll go talk to Ronnie and Ronnie says, "Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea." So I'll, I'll, I'll rather stick to Ronnie because he's telling me, he's affirming what I want, even though what David says is probably right. But I don't want to listen to David because he didn't, he doesn't agree with me. So I, I listen to the person that agrees with me. But actually, it's the wrong decision. Do you know what I mean? This is, this is sort of what is talking about here. They will heap up teachers for themselves based on their own desires. So they only listen to the people that, that meets their desires, what they want to hear, okay? Because they have itching ears. And they will also, verse 4, "They will turn their ears away from the truth because the truth is too difficult. It's hard to accept." Because if you follow the truth, you have to make changes. You have to take responsibility. It's going to hurt a lot. There is, you cannot enter the kingdom without suffering and tribulation. "The way to life is narrow," Matthew, chapter 7. "It is narrow and difficult." "It is narrow and difficult. But the way that leads to destruction is broad, and many go by it." That's why they turn their ears away from the truth. Because it's too difficult. What do I mean by difficult? It means that they may have to flip their life upside down. They have to change who they associate with. They may even have to move sometimes. They have to quit their jobs. They have to become persecuted by people. They have to be seen as fools. There's so many reasons, right? They had to give up things in their life. It's very difficult to go the way of the kingdom, to pursue the truth. The truth is not just, and we'll talk about it. The truth is not an easy way. And they'll be turned aside to fables. Fables are just stories. People like to listen to stories. It makes them feel good. So the root of this is feelings. I want things that make me feel good. I don't want things that make me feel bad. Even if the things that make me feel bad are right. I know it's right, but I don't want it because it's too difficult. So I turn away from it. And I go after teachers that tell me the things I want to hear. And this is the problem. This is part of the problem with Christianity. They don't care about God's way because His way is difficult. And the pastors will have to give up their jobs. They worked, they went to Bible school for years and paid so much tuition to get that degree so that, and to be ordained and so they can be called pastors, reverends, so and so. With the, with the three letters, the letters behind their name. And then now you're telling them, "What, I have to give it up?" They won't do that. They won't do that, right? You're telling me I can't have Christian entertainment? You mean church is not about entertainment? What do you mean? It's just sitting, listening to the Bible and exercising the, the Word of God? No, that's boring. That's too boring. Church needs to be like a party. Sometimes, after, after we leave on Sundays, you hear a party going. It's like a party. You know, that's what people want. You know, it's really, but you know, okay. I put this last phrase down here in red. Because I know some people will be offended by what I just said. I'm asking, is recognizing problems being judgmental? Because you're probably saying that we're being judgmental. I feel actually sad for the condition of many of the Christians out there. I really do feel sad. And I feel, if I'm part of that, I want the Lord to show me right away so that I'm not doing it. I don't want to be doing something that is not according to the truth. I want to pursue the truth. But we have to recognize the problem. It doesn't mean we are criticizing people. But there is a problem out there. You know, everybody agrees. If I tell you that, let's say Buddhism is wrong. And Buddhists, those who believe in Buddha, they will go to the lake of fire. Do you find that offensive? Is that offensive to you? Or Muslims, or people who, you know, follow false gods? Or Hindus, or? If I, if we say that, that these people, they will end up in the lake of fire, and that is wrong, what they believe is wrong. Is that offensive? Is that judgmental? I think everybody agrees that Jesus is the only way to salvation. And you will not hesitate to say Jesus is the only way. And that following false gods is not acceptable. But somehow, when we talk, point out the practices of Christians, the false practices, somehow people get offended. But if we point out the false practices of other religions, everybody agrees. Why? It's not wrong to point out that there are practices today that are not according to the way of the Lord. And we need to recognize them so that we avoid them and we can warn people. We're not against the people. We also want people who follow Buddhism and Islam and Hinduism and all the different types. We hope that they will be saved. Right? In the same way, we also hope that all believers will come to the knowledge of the truth and not be blinded anymore. These are our brothers and sisters. You know, but many are so oblivious. They don't know. Not that we know everything, we definitely don't know. But as far as we know, and as far as the Lord has revealed, we have to go this way. Right? So this brings me to, what is the truth? You know, this truth, it's, it's, part of it is the correct doctrine, the correct teaching. But it's mainly, more important than the correct doctrine is the substance, the fulfillment of this word of the correct teaching and the reality, the substance of it. This is much more important. And we have to realize that there is only one truth in the whole universe. There is only one truth. And it is not being exclusive to say that there is only one truth. Let's, in John, chapter 8. John, chapter 8. Verse 32. I'll read it for you quickly. It says, "And you shall know the truth. And the truth shall make you free." Did Jesus say, "You shall know a few truths, a part of the truth"? You know, you'll know my truth, but there are other truths out there. He didn't say that. He said, "The truth." There is only one truth, okay? And the truth is actually a person. It's Jesus Christ. His life is the fulfillment and the substance. He is the Word of God in the flesh. The Word of God in the flesh. The truth is, there's only one truth because it's Him. And it comes from Him. So in John 1:4, it says that the word became flesh and dwelt among us. That's why to know the truth, you have to know the Lord. You cannot know it by reading books and listening to people. You have to come to the Lord. You have to know Him because He's the only way. John, chapter 1:14, right? It says, "And the word became flesh and dwelt among us, and we beheld his glory, the glory as of the only begotten of the Father, full of grace and truth." Yeah, and of course, John 14:6, we know this very well. I think everybody can quote it. What is John 14:6? "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father except through me." Yeah, He is the way, the truth, and the life. Amen. He is the only way and the truth. Yeah, so there is no option. There are not, there are not different types of truths out there. There is only one. And the Spirit is what leads us into the truth. John, chapter 14, also same chapter. It says in 16 and 17. It says, "I will pray the Father, and he will give you another helper that he may abide with you forever, the Spirit of truth, whom the world cannot receive, because it neither sees him nor knows him; but you know him, for he dwells with you and will be in you." So we have no excuse not to know the truth. Because we have the Spirit of truth with us and in us. And He leads us into the truth. In chapter 16, uh, yeah, chapter 16, verse 13. Right, it says here again, "The Spirit of truth. When he, the Spirit of truth, has come, he will guide you into all truth." He will guide you into all truth. So He not only teaches us, but He makes it, He produces it in us. He produces the word in us. Yeah, so it's really amazing. And He intercedes for us, He prays for us, right? And it is really Christ living in us. He is the hope of glory, the hope, He is the only way that we can be perfected. Alright, so, um, yeah, so, again, and the church is the pillar and ground of the truth in 1 Timothy 3:15. This means that the church, in the church, there has to be truth. There has to be truth, and people have to be able to see it. They must see the truth in us. Okay? So again, you cannot choose your version of the truth. There is no such thing as different versions of the truth. We have to seek it. So in other words, there is no such thing as this church, or that church, or my church, or his church, or her church. There is no such thing. I challenge you to find it for me in the Bible. Find it in the Bible, one case where it says, someone says, "My church." Except other than Jesus Christ. Anybody else other than Jesus Christ that says, "My church." Or his church, or her church, or something. It is not there. You will never find it. But that's the norm today, right? People, there are many churches and people go church shopping. It's like they're looking for a restaurant, right? They check the reviews and then they go here, they try it, not good, I go to the next one. It's really like finding a restaurant. "Oh, I found this one has good dishes, so I'll stay here. And tomorrow, the, it's not good anymore, I'll go find another one." "Oh, I got into a fight with the chef, I'll go find another one." It's really unfortunate. It really is sad. And some people think, what do they, what do you think? That each denomination has a purpose from God. You know, there are many different denominations, right? Many different denominations. There's Baptist, Presbyterian, there's Anglican, there's, you know, Evangelical, and so on and so on, Alliance, and... And some people say, each of these denominations, they all have a part to play in the body of Christ. Is that right? Is that right? It sounds good, doesn't it? But it sounds good. It's like, you know, what Baptist is like the hand, and the Presbyterian is the, the ear, and then the... You know, it sounds good. But it's not the truth. If it was meant to be like that, it would have been like that right from the very beginning, when the church was formed. In the New Testament, you will only see one church. Yeah? So we need to ask, what is the goal of the people that we fellowship with? We are all spiritually part of the body of Christ. But of the people that you are in fellowship with, meeting together, what is their goal? What are they trying to accomplish? Right? Is it aligned with God's goal? What do they stand for? And very importantly, do you see fruit? Do you see, do you see real changes in people? Right? So do they see what the true church is? And do these people realize and understand what the real church is? And are they willing to leave behind all of the false teachings and the traditions of man? Are they willing to leave all these things behind? And are they preparing for Christ's return? So what other Christians are doing, God will judge. What each of us does, God will judge. We don't need to, we don't need to judge what others are doing. But we have to make sure what we are doing is correct. Every one of us, we have to make sure what we are doing is correct. Okay? Because it will all be put to the test. Yeah, so I put up a little map here. Just in our little neighborhood, you can see all these red dots. There are so many different types, right? North York, Mandarin, Bible Grove, Bible Chapel, First Alliance, Epiphany of Our Lord, Grace, Chinese Gospel Church, Fountain of Life. Wow, they sound so good. Oh, even one called Zion, wow. And Fairview Church of God.
Oh, not that one.
Huh? Oh, you know that one. Okay, you know that one. You know that one. I don't see Fairview Church of God in the Bible. Or St. Timothy. Oh, and there's, there's our, there's, this is our meeting hall, okay? The church in Toronto. Yeah, we're on Google Maps, right? Okay? But you can see, they're just in this little square. There's so many. Which one? Which one? Very, very, this is not a good condition, okay? Not a good condition. The body of Christ was always meant to be one. It was not meant to be divided. There is only one kingdom. Just like we said, there's one kingdom, there's one truth. And the Lord said, "Any kingdom divided against itself will not stand." It cannot stand. That's why Satan is working so hard to divide the body of Christ. Each one of those groups, they all have their own interpretations and their own ways of thinking and their own ways of doing things. It should never have been like that. We are all part of one body. There is only one church. You have to realize, in the Bible, there is only one church. Okay? But each of the, and we'll get into that point. All the saints in Acts, chapter 4, you'll see, they were all of the same mind. Okay? Oneness in the body of Christ is so important. It is crucial. It is the foundation, one of the foundations of the church. That's why Christ tore down the wall of separation. He died on the cross to eliminate the differences, the things that separate us so that we can be made one. It says, "To be made one new man, no more Jew or Greek." Right? We're all one in Christ Jesus. And we regard no one according to the flesh because we are now a new creation in Christ. So I don't see the outward differences anymore. I don't care if you're young or old, you're, you know, Chinese, Indian, or, or African. It doesn't matter. We're all one in Christ, right? Our fellowship should be one. Now, there were people who, I wanted to bring up this point. Sometimes you'll hear this term, "Ground of locality" or "Ground of the church." This is not, this is something, I didn't know what this was. I didn't know what they were talking about, but then I realized what they meant by this. It means that, this is a term that somebody made up a long time ago referring to the principle in the Bible of one church, one city. In other words, the principle that, in every, in the Bible, you will see, there's one church. But the, the practical way that people meet together is that there is one gathering of the church in every city. So in a particular city, you will not see many churches. In every church, in the, in the Bible, you will only see, there's only one church. So in Corinth, you will see the church in Corinth. In Ephesus, you will see the church in Ephesus. You will not see Paul saying, "The churches of Ephesus." It's always the church in Ephesus, right? Or you'll see in the seven churches, the Revelation 2 and 3, you'll see the church to Ephesus, to Smyrna, to Thytyra, to, and so on and so on, right? It's always one church in every city. Because if you, because that is the only, you can't possibly have, you know, so many Christians all gathered into Jerusalem. So the only way to, that makes sense to split up the body of Christ is by geography. It's by city. And that's the other way. If you split it up any other way, like by denomination, that's actually not good. Right? So you want to preserve the oneness as much as possible. So that's why we see this principle of how there was only one gathering of the church, one assembly of the church in every city. And that's also why we are, our, our registered name is the church in Toronto. Because we're just the church, which is the body of Christ, but we're gathered in Toronto, okay? We're not, you know, we're not David's church. We're not David's church on Victoria Park, right? We're, we're just, we're just simply the church. That's who we are. But the church actually in the Bible, it has no name. You'll never see that any church in the Bible, any local gathering of the church has a name. They're just the church. And they're, they're referred to by the city, okay? So, this is something that unfortunately, some people in the past have emphasized so much that they lost sight of other things that are important, like the life in the church or the spirit. But we have to be careful that this is still a very important principle. You still, just because some people in the past overemphasized it, it doesn't mean that today, now you can have five churches in one city. It doesn't mean you can do that, right? The, the key point here is still that the oneness of the body is still very important, okay? So, you know, we have to be careful with this one. This is, this is just good to know, but it's not something that we need to overemphasize, right? The more important thing is the substance and the truth. And true oneness is in Christ is not forced or manufactured. It's not an outward display, it's not like, oh, we all wear the same clothes and we're one. We're all, you know, doing the same thing, the same way, we pray the same way, we talk the same way, we sing the same way, then we're one. That's not what it is, right? It's really oneness in Christ, in the spirit, and it's produced by the life that's in us, okay? So, this is, and it's the love that brings us all together, that binds us together. So, um, yeah, so I really, that, that's pretty much it for my slides. I, sorry, but that was a, a lot to cover. But I really hope that we realize and understand that how important the church is as the kingdom of God. And that we really care about God's desire and his plan. And we pray diligently for the church, because the church is really under attack right now. And God is looking for a group of people who are faithful to him, to work together, to build up the church. Okay? And I hope that is what we are. And I shared this mainly also for the new ones. Right? To remind them and to show them what the Bible says about something that is very, very important in the Lord's heart.